This meeting of the Board of Education to order. The Board would like to welcome the audience and thank you for attending. Viewers may watch Board of Education meetings and Board Committee meetings live at TCAPS.net/Board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. Please rise and join Ms. Wrighton's third grade class from Cortez Elementary in the Pledge of Allegiance. Always difficult to get the timing down, but always worth it. We have the review approval portion of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move to approve the agenda as presented. My second.
All right. Well, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to public comment, I see there are some cards, so I'll just go ahead and say that the Board has set aside this time for public comment and individual rules addressed on the board should have one opportunity to speak. They should be limited to three minutes. Individual should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system, and we strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint process outlined in Board Policy 2504. Tell me.
First is Tim Warner.
I'm Tim Warner, TCAPS parent, I guess. Both kids are in college now, junior and senior. I guess I'm here to encourage you to pursue educational opportunities. Fifteen years ago, plus or minus, I used to help with math in the school. And then recently, thirteen months ago, I was recruited by Mary Van Veelen to help with math at a private elementary school, third or fourth grade. It's hardwarming and heartbreaking all at the same time, from minute to minute, day to day. Twice a week in the afternoons I help. Some of the kids I help, they're just, they're so far behind, counting on your fingers to try to remember how to get from seven to ten when you're in third or fourth grade. And so, do I have the answer? No, but they certainly need more adult interaction. It's not to be blamed on the Board, administration, teachers, it's us as a community. It's a hard, it's a hard topic, but we're here to do hard things. I have the opportunity to work on hard things like housing and climate change, and there's no easy answers, there's no silver bullets. So same thing here, there's no silver bullets, there's no oh, if we only did this, it's gonna be just fine. It takes everything and it takes a lot of adult interaction, whatever that might look like. So, thank you.
Next, we have Jim Rowlett.
I hadn't planned on three minutes, so you'll save a little time with me. But I'm Jim Rowlett, and I was one of the founders of the Read to Me Collaborative. And most of you know this, I expect, but it's completely focused on working with new young parents to get them to read to their, their brand-new arrivals from birth all the way up into, into school so that they are really ready for kindergarten. And when I think about the fact that you're looking at the, let's say, the performance of the elementary schools, if the kids aren't ready for kindergarten and if they get there and they can't read, it makes your job extra hard. So, I've only, what I wanted to tell you, and then I'll sit down, is that we have all kinds of communications approaches. I mean, I'm not gonna go through them now, but you know, there's a poster, and there's a flyer, and they all tell the same story, and they're all easy to understand. And we think that's really important, not for you, but for those young parents who may not be very well-educated themselves, and they can't handle complicated explanations of education and the whole thing. But what we've got and what we try to put together is something that anybody can understand and feel comfortable. Number one, getting free books, and number two, having assistance if they need it, and getting the job done, even if they have three jobs in a hectic household. So, that's what we're trying to do. And I, I'll, well, you've got my card, but I would be glad to meet with any of you or part of you to let you know in a little more detail of really how we might be able to work together to reach those parents that are all in school now, but might have kids coming along that you haven't seen yet. Thank you.
Mary Van Veelen.
I'm Mary Van Veelen, and Tim Warner spoke of the volunteers that are helping with math at Traverse Heights. And I think all of it feels like it's work that is so precious that we have a real purpose when we get in there. And I just want you to know that I think really setting measurable goals for all students in achievement is so important, and that you're not doing this job alone. We have a generous community of retired educators, engineers, and a whole lot of other folks that are so ready to come in and help and try to see kids in smaller groups and keep focused. So, I thank you for this work you're doing, and just know you're not in it alone, you can do the hard things. Thanks.
Gretchen Crunk.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for all of you. I've recently begun volunteering again in the Traverse City schools. And what came to my attention, attention was the article about ten years ago in the Record Eagle that talked about the two teachers at Cortez who started gathering data and needing to analyze it and use that information to come up with strategic plans to help their students. And that was the school that in 2015 was nominated for the National Title I Distinguished School Program because they helped all their students improve proficiency. So, my question for you this evening is, has that strategy that was so successful ten-plus years ago been studied? Has it been implemented in schools here in Traverse City and the other schools besides Cortez? And if not, is there a chance that that could be grown further?
Bill.
Thank you. Bill Weisner, I receive. And I've got three pages I'm going to send to you. This is like twenty-five pages, and this is the book. This could be the first book at TCAPS that talks, gives the other side of the issue. You've got five hundred books basically promoting homosexual behavior. People say it's not doing that, but to promote LGBT, that's a bottom-line part of it. Without anything on the other side, this would be a wonderful book. "The Querying of the American Mind: How a New School Religious Cult Poisons the Minds and Bodies of Normal Kids," by Logan Lancing with James Lindsay. And they have a, through, um, what is it? Epoch Times. If you Google Epoch Times and Jane Lindsay and Logan Lancing expose the truth behind queer theory, there's like an hour and fifteen-minute video that's very revealing. Every leader at TCAPS, I think, would be intrigued to see this and very, very concerned by it. So, that's the first item. And the second and third items are parts one and two of, okay, sorry, there we go. Parts one and two of Gender Ideology: Neopagan Blurring of Biology and Justice. This is part one, and it's just got a whole lot that you probably haven't seen anything like this. As to humanity and human rights, I'll just read some of the subtitles. Humans are creatures, humans are Imago Deo, or in the image of God. Humans are rational, humans are inherently worshippers, humans are sexual dimorphs, humans are missionary-oriented, and it just lays out, they say, well, we can't have religion in schools. Well, you have it with all the LGBT stuff, and this explains a lot of that. And the second, I heard it, um, it's got a poster like that, LGBTQ Lives Matter. Again, this is part two. Spirituality of Homosexuality: Language as a Political Tool, the Fox, and the legal angle. The LGBTQ Great Commission has six parts. Make Victemizers Look Bad is part five. The LGBTQ Agenda and Spiritual Subversion, the LGBTQ Agenda and Legal Subversion, and it goes on for some others, and I will be emailing this to you. I know you're busy. Look into this video, it's very good, and I think it'll intrigue you, you won't wanna stop. Thank you.
Thank you, that's the end of the public comments. Moving on to consent, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move.
My second.
Second. All right, well, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to study session, obviously the big, but before I get over, I do know that a lot of Board members have had commitments, I wasn't expecting, sure who was gonna be here, and I know there's a few things going on, so if anyone does have to step out or leave, that's absolutely fine. Obviously, it is via recorded as well. So, with that, phone to Dr. Wagner.
Okay, so we have a presentation for you, it ain't meant to be, you know, stop, ask questions, those things as we go through. So, I'll go ahead and pass it over to Dan, and he'll lead the team through the presentation.
Thanks, thanks, Dr. Wayne Wagner. Before we get going, I just wanna do some introductions. Kirk Rainey is with us tonight, he's a principal at Blair Elementary Schools. Missy Warner, if you haven't been to Board Curriculum, Director of Whole Child Systems. And then Brittany Kay joined us this year, and she's Director of Curriculum. So, I wanted to get started with what we put in front of our building leaders every time we have the opportunity to meet with them. So, joint principals, secondary principals, elementary principals, we always start our meetings off, since the beginning of the years, with these two things. One, significantly improve student achievement and close achievement gaps, and then two, be able to manage all the other aspects. Manage all of the aspects of your job in a manner so you can do number one. So, just as we think about that and we go through the presentation, that's something that Jesse and I kind of pride ourselves at, that we're able to come into this position twenty-five-plus years in a building, so we understand that we can help filter a lot of what happens with number two, so that building can super-focus on what, what's important in front of them, their number-one job, teaching and learning. So, what to expect tonight? So, kind of, we broke this down into three categories. Started off with our what, so kind of summarizing our what, looking at different funding sources that we allocate, understanding achievement data, and also looking at what supports are in place. The why is how can we support all learners, and how can we be equitable when we distribute resources? And then our how is that, you know, the, the big one we've been talking about is establish that process to set meaningful, meaningful student achievement and growth outcomes. And again, feel free to stop at any point if you have questions. Okay, so setting the stage, when we look at the achievement gap, I put this graph up as an example, because when I was looking at data specifically and looking at the achievement gap, this graph repeated itself over and over and over again. And when we started to look in historically, what is the achievement gap? We look back at NAEP studies that were done nineteen-seventies when they started to really look at it, the achievement gap has always unfortunately been part of education, but specifically what they started to look at in the nineteen-seventies is they started with race, and then they went on to more studies when they looked into gender, and then they went on to more studies when they looked at the social economics. So, in this particular graph, what we did is I took third through twelfth grade proficiency data and I combined it, right? So, I looked at MSEP, I looked at PSAT, I looked at SAT, and I mapped it out as far as TCAPS, Northwest, Edmonds State. And when we look at that, we always see that the top three lines, right, show us are not, are non-economically disadvantaged, our bottom three lines show us are economically disadvantaged. And what I found was fascinating that when you go through this, it's always about a twenty-five to thirty percent difference, no matter, there are some subtle, subtle differences, but grade level, subject, it always seems, seems to be the same, that we always fall onto that. There was nothing more than this graph to show that achievement gap and the idea that, I, I realize that, I'm not trying to compare in this particular graph TCAPS in the state and Northwest Ed, because this data actually, when we look at Northwest Ed data, includes TCAPS data. So, if you were to take ours out of this, that would drop even lower. But again, this is just to show when you look at TCAPS or you look at the state, it always seems to fall in that twenty-five to thirty percent. So, that's kind of our starting point, when we start, when we start to talk about, you know, what type of growth we wanna make or what type of proficiency changes we wanna start with, that's kind of the gap that we always see.
Mr. Tewser, do we have nationwide data available for this, for these graphs?
We do. I wouldn't have it in the presentation, but definitely as far as MSEP is Michigan, about for PSAT and SAT, we do.
So, when we have future presentations, can we just make sure we get national data too?
We wouldn't have it for the MSEP, though. No. Because that's a state-only test.
Yeah.
There's no comparison from there. Yeah.
So, it'd have to be NWVA versus MSEP for this.
Correct.
Well, and the national assessment.
But only a small group takes that.
Right.
It's only a sample, that's all.
It's representative.
Yep.
Dan, just a, a question, and again, I'm new to the Board, so I wanna make sure I've got the vernacular down. When you talk about gaps, that implies there's some sort of a target at the top end. What, what is, how do you define what, when you talk gap? What does gap mean at this point?
I would, it's a gap, the particular group that we're gonna focus on is that economic versus non-economic disadvantaged students, right? And that idea that we, as far as where that gap is, is where we're gonna close it, and discussing with the Board and our curriculum team what closing that gap looks like, either through growth or proficiency.
But gap, sort of, to me, implies that there's a target out there that's optimal performance, and then what we're trying to do is get students from point A to D.
So, I would say, I would say optimum performance would be for now. I mean, we still wanna see our non-economically disadvantaged students grow, but for now would be to get to that point, for economically disadvantaged students to close that gap.
Okay.
I have a question. If you start out with a twenty-five-point gap in third graders, and you move them to the fourth grade, but you don't make up for where the gap is on the third grade, seems to me that that gap will just follow, because you've never closed it at the beginning. And I think to some degree that bears out across here. And forgive me, I've been trying to read Mr., I keep calling the wrong thing, John Hattie's book, and one of the things he says is, you have to get mastery and then challenge, and you move on through the mastery. So, if they never mastered it, it's really hard to move them as you move them to another grade. But your curriculum, of course, in the fourth grade will stay the same, right?
It does. Yeah. And I think there's so, a few opportunities. One, the idea when we talk about Hattie's growth is to actually, for certain kids to make more than a year's growth, right? That catch-up growth. What we do right now, minus the last year on some of our data, because we think some of the things that we started recently is helping to close that gap, specifically when we talk about our curriculum coming in, but that explicit instruction piece that is kind of carrying over all of our Tier One instruction, that Brittany will get into more, will help make more than a year's growth. Now, if they come into fourth grade and they still don't, you know the material, then we start to supplement, and Jesse's gonna talk about this, it's how we use our state grant funds in order to supplement areas in order to give them extra help during the school day. Regardless, you know, when we look at the achievement gap again, as much as we do in schools, there's a large, even more gap of time they're not with us. And with the achievement gap, you know, this is, again, I go back to previously or this slide, this is a problem that we've seen since the beginning of schooling, right? And we do our best as far as figuring out what we know about research, and especially when we go back to Tier One instruction, which I think we're gonna make our most movement on, to close that achievement gap. So, just the idea that there's no, nobody has a fix, right? If ever, if they, if there was a fix out there about closing the achievement gap, we'd be doing it, right? But as a nation, if we were to look at nationwide data, I, I would bet it looks real similar to this.
Yeah. And I think he would, he would agree with you. And he doesn't list socioeconomic status as one of the big reasons for the difference in the gap. And then he supports it, which I thought was very, very interesting.
But I do think if you look at national data, that, that is, you know, one of the biggest determining factors.
It's one of the things you can say is associative. I don't know if you can say it's causal. And there were some other things that I thought, in my heart of hearts, would be very instrumental, he says, class size. It's not that the big thing, it begins to make a difference in closing the gap as well, which I found was very interesting.
So, just some of the stuff from, the number-one thing, or not number-one, but when we read studies about closing the achievement gap, one of the biggest reasons we, we saw is the quality of teacher in front of the student.
Yeah.
A difference that could make. So, we're, we are gonna go into that when we go through some infrastructure things about different things we're currently doing to close the achievement gap, but that discussion that we've had with the Board and Board Curriculum about coaching, that's one of those things where we, we think that, that can hit the sweet spot.
Yeah. One of the things he said was something about a student's prior ability and prior achievement tended to be one of the big predictors on how well they do. So, it seems that early on, you have to get proficiencies so that they can have this ability and achievement, not much to build. But if you move them before they get that, it seems that kind of you're crushing them a little bit further.
To, to that point, is, the one thing that we're not gonna talk about today is everything that happens before they get to us, which, with the Read to All and the comment earlier, and I know there's a lot of other programs too, but you said we can't necessarily solve everything, and no one has figured out the, the ideal solution yet, but it's gonna take the community to.
No, but when we, when we did go through research, again, probably another indicator, and I know this is a passion of yours, about that JK program and our pre-K programming, and how we can get in front of that, and having a JK program and making that a priority and that second, essentially, two years of kindergarten for these kids, I think we are starting to see a little bit of impact from that also.
Right, right. And he talks about some of that as well.
Slide one.
Don't worry, it won't be, it'll be, that was a disproportionate number of habits.
So, and I also wanted to just kind of describe what does it mean to be economically disadvantaged? So, this is off our state site, when we look at what was, means to be free and reduced. So, twenty-three, twenty-four, thirty-five percent approximately free and reduced, about three thousand students, twenty-four, twenty-five, about seven percent less, and twenty-four, around twenty-four hundred students. Now, I think the main indicator of this is that what we have found with the state program offering all free lunches, that the forms, because there's a form to indicate, so on that form, you can see we have household size, and we have income, and that determines if you're free and reduced or not, that a lot of these students applied for free and reduced because of the meals that they got at school. Since everyone was getting free meals, they didn't necessarily have to fill out the form, and therefore, we see these numbers drop. We don't, we, we believe we still have thirty thousand, if not more student, I'm sorry, three thousand, if not more students still in front of us, because even when you're at your peak, right, and thirty-five percent free and reduced is about where TCAPS is, we still have kids in front of us that are at risk or economically disadvantaged that aren't indicated necessarily in a form somewhere. We still have kids in front of us that are at risk or economically disadvantaged, that aren't indicated necessarily in a form somewhere. Okay, so current TCAPs work that we're doing, basically, we're going to take you through some causal factors. That include infrastructure, what our leaders do, curriculum and instruction, teachers and students. And kind of hit upon, there's several items for each one we could go into. We decided to spotlight a few from each one, just, just to highlight. If you have any questions about any of the other ones that we listed, always feel free to ask. So for infrastructure, several listed here, we're going to specifically spotlight two of these. Actually, we're going to spotlight another one, the Teach for America under our leadership also. But first one, funding allocation, that's district and building, and then also, we're going to look at our social work.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about the funding allocation slides, because as, as Dr. Van Wagner said at the last meeting. I do all the state and federal grants for the district, right, submitting all those. I work with Sandy Lo and the business offices to what we're required to submit, and then how, where funds are distributed. And then the limitations or what the funds are intended for. So Title I is one of the additional funding allocations that we get as a district. It is only given to our elementaries. It's a federal funds that has got pointed out flow through the state and then to us. It is actually determined by the census poverty rates. So that's determined at a federal level. They distribute those to school districts through the state, and then we allocate those to sites based on their free and reduced rates. Now, not all of our elementary schools qualify for title funds. If you'll, you'll kind of look at that list, I put all the free and reduced percentages. I did rank the schools top to bottom on that, on the numerical chart side for you guys. And so you'll see, like, those bottom four schools, we do not allocate title funds to them, because they don't have the density of free and reduced that the other ones have. And we actually, you know, we anticipate a few of those, depending on where our free and reduced numbers come in, they might fall off as well. And then we allocate the funds per student kind of based on that density idea. We have a formula that the state recommends and federal guidance gives us too. So you can see, like, students at Traverse Heights get a higher per student allocation of title funds, because they have a higher density of those students within their buildings. And then the charts on the left just kind of give you an idea of the total amount that that site is allocated. That's above and beyond the general funds that they get for formulas. Most of our sites, and I know Mr. Rainey will talk about this at Blair, because he gets quite a bit, you can chime in right here. What they do with their title allocation is they, they hire more staff, and they do those interventions, the behavior support.
Yeah, we, I mean, we utilize the title funds. So it's, it's instructional support for reading, primarily reading and math. And it's, in addition to or above and beyond what takes place in the, the general education classroom. So to kind of get at that idea of, we want to work with our students who are most at risk. So that we are increasing the percentage of students who are proficient, to hopefully mirror that of our students who are not, who are not economically disadvantaged. So that's kind of one of the levers we use throughout the district at, at all these schools. So to, to try to level that playing field and to, to get to that, that catch-up growth. So not only do they get instruction in reading in the classroom, they get targeted instruction on those, those areas of weakness or deficiencies they might be having. So that when they do move on to the next grade, we're, we're hopefully catching, catching them up. So eventually, by the time we get to fifth grade, we'd like to see that even out. Or, or also as they, you know, matriculate into middle school and then into high school. Because sometimes that continuum or timeframe exists beyond just that, that kindergarten through fifth grade.
Yeah, and I'd say one thing that we know is that kids don't grow at a linear rate, right? Right? And so one of the reasons why, even if a student is reading at a second grade level, we still give them fourth grade instruction, because kids will surprise us. We're like, they're kind of stuck for a while, and then all of a sudden, we see a big spurt. And we, if we never give them or expose them to those grade level standards, then they will never have an opportunity to reach that, right?
And, and one of the, one of those balance points, and I think specific in elementary education, is that it's not just reading and math. We're also looking at science and social studies, and even within reading, we're looking at, there's, there's knowledge that we'd like them to gain. And then there's a specific reading-based skills. And so they may be deficient in some of those skills, but we still want to ensure they have access to the knowledge base in the oral language. That's incredibly important for, for students to get. So they kind of, that, that their learning is enriched, not just from a skills-based standpoint, but also factoring in that. That critical knowledge they need to have to, to move forward and, and participate in society down the road.
So those are our Title I funds, oh, sorry.
Yeah, and just one thing to point out on this, you see that cut line for Cherry Knoll's, about thirty-five percent, that's where generally our title funding comes in. Some of our schools do flutter on that, so like, for instance, next year Cherry Knoll and Cortade, when we look at their numbers moving into next year, don't qualify for title. We have the ability to grandfather them in for a year, because we know, you know, especially like a school like Cortade, where there's about two hundred kids. That how, like, literally ten to twenty kids can push them in and out, and we don't want to disrupt necessarily that particular funding for that group. And then the next thing is, is the idea of the number of free and reduced students, and this is somewhat of a passion of mine, coming from Westwoods. Knowing that I didn't get the title funding, but we still had a hundred and nine free and reduced students sitting in front of us. Sometimes more than a title school, but the concentration wasn't as much. And so the idea that those kids still need support, right? We, we go all the way back to my first year at Westwoods, when we closed Interlochen. You know, I brought seventy free and reduced kids into Westwoods. They had five days of social work at Interlochen, because they had the funding, Westwoods they had two. So those seventy kids, for some reason, now need three less days of social work, you know, available to them, because they're mixing with a different social economic population. So that's one of the things, thing to think about, that when we do like equitable funding. That the biggest difference is that when we do the, what Mr. Rainey was talking about, when we have those pull-out groups. Title schools can hire certified teachers to do that. They can use FTE, average FTE in TCAPs with benefits is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, right? Those non-title schools are more apt to use aids, at the cost of about, when you do hourly with benefits, comes in about fifty thousand dollars.
I had a couple of questions on this that, that I think are quick. First of all, these dollars, is that the current school year, twenty twenty-four?
That's this current school year, yep.
And then, so if I understood your explanation of Title I funds, so the federal government is looking at Graham Travis County poverty rates. Maybe a piece of Benzy, piece of Leland counties, but basically, it's like global for a district, based on census. And then TCAPs has the leeway to allocate the dollars as it wishes, and you're basing it on free and reduced lunch at, at the, at the various schools. Okay, so it looks like, like with Willow Hill having the highest percentage here at thirty-one, that indicates our threshold must be a little above that.
It's actually, it's actually closer, I kind of remember what Sandy said, it's actually right around forty percent, but we can, we can go a little bit below. Which is why we get Long Lake and Cherry Knoll included into that allocation. The, they give us a percentage that they recommend, and we kind of go, we look at it, and then we look at all of our free and reduces, sort of where is that national cut point?
And that's Westwoods, thirty-one point two is Westwood.
Yep, sorry about that, I misspoke. Okay, and then I think you mentioned too, that this part of the extra Title I money goes towards teachers. So does it reduce the teacher-to-student ratios at these schools?
No, it, it's above and beyond services. So it's for interventions, it's for specifically reading and math support. It's not for class, like, this is that idea of, they don't want us to, let me say the words right. Circumplant, thank you. That means we can't say, oh, we're going to pay our Traverse Heights teachers from this. Nope, we have to add, these funds are above and beyond. So they already get the allocation of the teaching staff and the allocation of the resources to the building principal for their budget. These are additional funds these buildings receive with the goal of educating these kids.
Supplemental services.
And then the next slide is our at-risk allocation, all right? So these are state funds, not federal, these are state, they're determined by that free and reduced percentage rate. So when Dan talked again about these forms, the only way we're going to qualify for these is for families to fill out the forms. And I will tell you, i- it is tough, sometimes with our families who are farthest from opportunity. They don't love filling out governmental forms. And so we have been working with our building principals on how do we make the form easy to fill out, safe, you know, that families understand what the form is for. But this is allocated based on that free and reduced percentage that we, our families submit to those forms. And then we allocate it to sites by at-risk indicators, which is different than your free and reduced. At-risk indicators are students who maybe didn't reach proficiency on state assessments in math and reading. And it's also students who have what we consider soft factors for at-risk, which means they could have a parent incarcerated. They could be in the foster care system, they could be a child of a teenage parent, they could have been born with an addiction to a substance. A lot of times, our social workers and counselors will help us identify those kids who maybe are meeting benchmark, but are still considered at risk. And we want to make sure they're receiving those extra services. So like, that's like really confusing both of these funds, so I, I hope that provided some clarity. These funds for at-risk are allocated not only to our, all eleven of our elementary schools, but our secondary sites also receive these. It's a less per student allocation, and that's an allocation that we as a district decided, it's sort of an upstream thinking. And again, you see the two seventy-four is because those are title buildings who have that higher concentration. And so we have allocated those buildings more per kid for that funding. And then our secondary sites, I want to say they receive closer to a hundred dollars per kid for what their allocations look like.
Question on non-English language learners? Does that come from at-risk or more title funds?
So it's totally separate. Those come from two different things. We get Title III funds, which is a federal funds that help us with that. And then we get a state allocation under what's called forty-one A, which help us with that too. But it would, the number's not pretty, Erica, it's like less than two hundred thousand dollars to educate all of our English. It is an area that we talk more about at the state and the federal level. There's been more chatter about it, about how vulnerable those kids are, about how farthest, especially when you're talking about some of your Yale kids who walk in as a high schooler. And not only do you not speak the language, you also don't even read your own native language, right? That's a really tough, and so that could be a whole nother board session, because we've done a lot of work on that.
Yeah, and we do use some at-risk funds to supplement our EL program. We're actually just posted for two new EL teachers next year to help get more support. Just the other day, we had three more EL students move into Traverse Heights, we're at fifty-four. So at fifty-four, when you think of a building that's running about two twenty-five-ish, right? Where twenty-five percent of their kids are EL kids. I was in there today, right? We have, you know, Nikki Vanderkolt Ryan's a teacher there, she's got about twenty kids in there, sixteen Spanish, Cuban speaking. And also speak Spanish, but it's brand new, three from Honduras, and then two from the Ukraine. So you can imagine that kind of balance in that classroom. And the vast majority, if not all of our EL kids, fall in a economically disadvantaged.
And I will just clarify for the audience, EL means English language learners, so they're students whose primary language at their home is not English.
Yeah, I misspoke, I thought non-English language.
You're fine, you're fine, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, you know what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, so first of all, I just want to say thank you for this explanation. I actually did not know that the state at-risk dollars definition was so different from the Title I. So I really appreciate that definition you gave us. And just to be clear, for, for students who are considered at risk, does it include the economically disadvantaged?
It does, it, it doesn't like off the cuff, for the most part includes all those kids, yes. We determine it by the proficiency scores, we can, and those soft factors. And a lot of time, hitting free and reduced rates, being an, an EL learner will all incorporate that piece too. I mean, that's where you see, I mean, Traverse Heights is at ninety-nine point three percent of its students. Okay, and then the next thing we wanted to talk about, the other piece of additional allocation. Yep, I'm going to talk about the numbers in a second, but I'm going to hand it over to Misty, because she's going to talk about what the, these are additional pot of money that we use primarily for that social work support.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about social work and how we have worked to integrate the core principles of trauma-informed programs and practices into the foundation of our approach, and a little bit about the frameworks that we've implemented to help guide this work. So our first clinical area of focus was to increase mental health supports in the buildings. With the goal being that all buildings would fully utilize those interventionist, social workers, those mental health team members to help drive this work. As we look to implement trauma-informed behavior support systems. So we hired five new interventionists, and those are bachelor-level positions in psychology, social work, or the related field. We also.
Excuse me.
None of us back here can hear most of what anybody is saying. If you would move your mics closer, I'd appreciate, I'm sorry to interrupt you, you have important work to do. But we are also here to be part of the conversation.
Is that better? Can't really get any closer, okay. So we have hired five behavior interventionists. Those are bachelor-level positions in psychology, social work, or the related field. We partnered with Community Action Agency to hire four school success liaisons. Those are also bachelor-level positions. We then hired three behavior specialists or school social workers. Those are master-level positions in psychology or a related field. We then looked at standardizing behavior systems and support district-wide. Once we were able to hire and have that, those support staff in the buildings. With the goal being that all buildings would be implementing comprehensive, trauma-informed supports to better support all of our students. Utilizing some frameworks that we concentrated on, and some models that we are using as well. So the first being positive behavior supports and intervention. And this is an evidence-based proactive framework that focuses on promoting positive behavior. And supporting that inclusive environment, building-wide, kind of at the ground level. So the principals took the lead on this work and created PBIS teams within their buildings. To help create, implement, and drive some of that PBIS systems work. Our mental health team members were trained in the following areas, beginning with restorative practices. And restorative practices is a framework that focuses on conflict resolution. So it really helps our students be able to recognize how their actions can affect others. We also use a model collaborative and proactive solutions. And this is a model that focuses on lagging skills and unsolved problems. It takes a little bit of a deeper dive into the underlying issues that can be causing some of this concerning behavior, rather than just looking at the behavior itself. Next, we were trained, our entire mental health team was trained in Trails. And Trails is, it was developed out of the University of Michigan's medical school. And our team was trained in all three of their programs, ranging from universal supports and education, all the way through crisis response and, and prevention. So moving forward, our focus will be to really refine our practices. To continue to deepen our understanding of this work through trauma-informed trainings and professional development. With the goal being that then our mental health team members will take the education and knowledge back to their buildings to be able to provide some professional development and education at the building level, as we continue to bring this work to scale.
So most of that work that Misty talked about is paid for either through the at-risk dollars or through this additional funding. So Title is almost primarily all instructional academic supports. Interventionist additional, like math pull-out support, reading support. At-risk funding can be a mix between academic additional support or social work, behavior support. But then in addition to that, all of our elementary buildings were allocated some FTE. So when we say FTE, one point O is a full-time teacher. And again, what Dan said on our EA scale, an average full-time teacher, and I'm talking retirement benefits, the whole package, just so we're clear, they do not get paid this. Is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, that's what it costs us to employ someone full-time. But the district, between either general, us, Dr. Van Wagner, and the board choosing to say, we need some additional general fund there. Or from different grants that we've used, have allocated each of our elementary sites this additional FTE. And you see, we kind of just determine that by free and reduced rates, that's what I ranked that third column by there. You might wonder, there's a few things that like, ah, it's only a point four at Cortade. Some of that has to do with staffing and making people have a full-time employable job that allows us to get somebody who's really good and highly qualified. But we put those totals there for you.
And just shout out to, to Misty, her work with the, kind of the Grow Your Own program here in TCAPs, where they, we hire them with a four-year degree. And they work to get their master's degree, and also her work with Western. Next year, these Next year, these numbers, we're able to have a one-point-oh at every school. So it's great to see that, I think, for the first time in, I don't know, five or ten years, we won't have a social work posting that we need for social workers at this time.
And then the last slide here, I just, I, to be honest, I just totaled everything for you. I put it on one nice clean slide here. So this is the additional allocations that the sites have received above and beyond what they're allocated by our normal budgeting process. Totals there, and then I sort of gave you the per-student percentage. So out of the total additional funding that the district allocated from those titles, those at-risk, general funds, grant dollars, those top-three schools. I mean, if you total those percentages, I think you're looking at like sixty percent, you know, fifty percent, just over fifty percent of the funds for those. What's not included in here, because of course after I made this, people brought up different things to me. The board in the fall did some allocation to Eastern for some split support or split, right, separation. There is some social work services through that.
NMCA.
Yep, that agreement that some of the sites received.
Yes, and so we were able to partner with them to hire four school success liaisons that were placed in our elementary buildings to help support.
And what buildings are those at?
Those are at Blair, Central Grade School, Traverse Heights, and Long Lake.
There's some additional funding that our Montessori receives to run the Montessori model. Requires two adults in the classroom, so they all have an aide in their classroom for that. And then there is another categorical we get from the state. It's called thirty-five A. It's an early literacy grant. And that is for elementary students to help with literacy skills. We allocate that, it ends up being about seventy dollars a student. We actually allocate that to the four schools that are not title schools to help give them enough in combination with their at-risk funding to be able to hire some actual personnel. It gets a little tricky if your allocation is twenty thousand dollars to actually hire a reliable, dependable person who shows up on the frequency you need for reading intervention, to be honest, so. Any questions about all of those members that I can answer?
I have one more question on special education students. Where did they fall in at-risk, title, or additional or not? Because that money comes from the fed, the federal.
Correct, and that is not, that's, yep, our special ed staffing is totally separate. No, some of those students could also be at-risk.
Yeah.
Or could also be title students. But the special ed services is a total separate allocation.
That's what I thought.
No, good question.
Are they included in the proficiency?
They are included in the proficiency. And some of those students do have learning disabilities that have been diagnosed and documented, right? But they are included in all of our students' proficiencies. And we want those students to make adequate growth and move along in their education.
I just want, could you go back for a second to the previous slide on the grant funding? I was just curious, because looking at Eastern, Montessori, Willow Hill, and West Woods, it's interesting on the grant front, you know, they got more than, say, Cortade, which got, you know, more Title I and state at-risk funding. So I was just curious, you know, why is it, do the buildings go for these grants? Or is it all applied for at the, okay, district level?
It's all decided at the district level. Some of it is a staffing thing. Like, I know that West Woods is using theirs for their social worker, and then they have selected to, a lot of them, a couple with the point seven-fives, to back fund the other part of it, so they have a social worker in their building every single day. And these are not individual grants that the buildings go for. We really try to work hard as a district to ensure that everybody's taken care of. It's not just if somebody somewhere has a great idea. We all are in this Traverse City community, and we want to make sure all kids have those resources.
And it's a, it's a per-student. So what I discussed earlier is the idea that there's a hundred and nine at West Woods and there's eighty-nine at Cortade. So even though they're more concentrated at Cortade, and Cortade is a title school, West Woods is not a title school, but those kids qualify for free and reduced, just like a kid at Cortade, just like a kid at Heights or at Blair. They all go through that original slide that I showed. What does it mean to be economically disadvantaged? They filled out that form also and qualified.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take a couple minutes to just walk through some of the kind of things that we're doing as a leadership team to address some of the issues that we kind of presented here. And so I think before I jump into the spotlight part, I do want to surface that historically, we, this year as a leadership team, we've undergone some training around the science of reading. And so it's been pivotal in kind of providing us with the knowledge necessary to really move the needle in terms of reading instruction. And then if we look ahead to next year, we're combining that with professional learning for both the leadership team and the, and our teaching staff around CKLA, our Core Knowledge Language Arts. And that is our new reading program. And so even then, if we go further back, I know we mentioned explicit instruction, and all our leaders have been trained in that. And that's kind of our instructional practice that we, we are surfacing at the building level. So we're in a kind of a really pivotal moment in that we have the knowledge base through science of reading, and all of our leaders are engaging in, in the work necessary to lead that at the building level. We're doing the same then with instructional materials. And then we have the instructional approaches or practices in place. So I feel like we are at this really important kind of point in our, kind of our, what we want to see for our students, that we finally have the materials, the knowledge, and the instructional practices or methodologies in place to really jumpstart some, some growth. So we are closing that gap between, you know, what we, what we see happening with our students who are economically disadvantaged versus those who are not. So shrinking that proficiency gap. So where our kids, who are not economically disadvantaged are close to seventy percent, and our students who are experiencing economic disadvantage are forty-four percent. I think we're at a spot where we'd like to see that. And we have the things in place to close that. So those numbers more closely mirror each other. I do want to jump in a little bit to the, to something specific for Blair and Traverse Heights, which is a partnership with Teach for America. And traditionally, Teach for America has taken young college students or recent graduates who have excelled kind of in their field of study, but who did not study education, and they place them in communities to support schools who are experiencing challenges. This model that we have partnered with Teach for America on is not that. So what Teach for America kind of surfaced, and then through Teach Michigan, is that we actually need our best, strongest, and most capable educators in front of our students who have some of the most significant challenges every day. And so what that's looked like, and from a leadership standpoint, is both Brian Kay, who's the principal at Traverse Heights, and myself have gone through, we're in our second year of pretty significant professional learning and supports from Teach for America through a program called Teach Michigan. And so what that's looked like for us is, it's really helped to develop some building-level systems or to optimize systems that already exist. Really focused on a lot of the same things we've, we talked about earlier, which is like the PBIS work and supporting student behaviors, and then setting and monitoring ambitious student achievement outcome goals. Like, the goal that I set with my staff this year was we want to see a hundred percent of our students meeting the proficiency achievement. And that's a big chunk to bite off. And so what we've done is, we kind of have shrunk that down to, what does that look like on a month-by-month basis? And so we're tracking our students' oral reading fluency. We're checking in on their mathematics, pre- and post-unit assessments, and then making instructional decisions and kind of informing how we pool those small groups that I discussed earlier from that kind of database process. And then, you know, through that, we also look at NWA three times a year. And what growth are we seeing from our students, and how does that project towards them staff? So that's been a pretty significant component of that leadership, or that learning for us. And there's another, I think, really transformative part of that is, Brian and I have both been able to receive coaching around leadership to help us. I think a lot of that has helped us, as Dan pointed out earlier, like, you have to be able to do the day-to-day activities in order to get to the student achievement. And so some of that leadership coaching has really been beneficial in creating some efficiencies for us so that we can be those instructional leaders in the building to help make sure that we are making progress towards closing that achievement gap. The other component that's been, I think, again, I think we're poised to reap the benefits of this partnership is that this isn't just for leaders. There are, this is for teachers and teacher leaders within the building as well. And so what that's really done is, it's not only increased their capacity individually, it's really raised the floor for what I think both of our staffs are able to think about and the discussions and discourse we're able to have around instruction and teaching and learning and student achievement. Because we have these eight people in each of our buildings who are engaging in in-depth, high-level professional development. So that's kind of what that Teach for America partnership looks like. And it's been, I think, a pretty integral part of some of the positive progress that we've made over the last couple of years.
And we did, we were able to get three additional seats for TC High teachers. So Ms. Choak, the principal at TC High, will join a cohort of specifically alternative high schools who are kind of beating the odds, right? And what are they doing? And so she's gonna have an opportunity to engage in that professional development and then take two teachers with her along for that. So she'll be part of that cohort, starting this fall, so.
So you have, you have four teachers at Blair that have gone through the program and four at Traverse Heights?
No, we have, it's about eight at each. We share our teacher, so we'll count her in both places. And actually, Misty is part of the initial cohort, so. And there's, there's a aspiring leaders cohort, so that's for our teacher leaders. There's a National Board Certification cohort. And then there's an early career educator. So for folks who are in their, about their first through third year. And so we have, we have a mix of folks in all of those different cohorts.
And there are only about, what do we say, probably twenty districts?
Yeah.
About twenty districts statewide that have been accepted, that they've invited to be a part of that. And they have a very high threshold of the amount of free and reduced lunch students you have to, for them to consider you. And so that's why those three schools are in that cohort.
Okay, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about curriculum and instruction and the historical and current supports tied to both of those causal factors. And so as you can see, we looped both of those in together just because they are linked so closely with one another. And I'm specifically gonna spotlight and talk a little bit more in-depth of what Kirk had just previously mentioned with regards to explicit instruction, as well as what's essentially on the horizon with our Core Knowledge Language Arts adoption, which many of you have been kind of a part of some of those presentations that occurred at Board Curriculum and Board Finance. And so explicit instruction really kicked off essentially a three-year plan for the district that really focused on building coherence and educator development and experiences. And so as you can see on that Venn diagram, explicit instruction is really tied to the how. So how are we delivering instruction in a way that's effective to meet the needs of all of the learners sitting in front of us? And so starting in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, all kindergarten through fifth-grade teachers participated in that site-based professional learning on explicit instruction through five targeted modules that were created by previous curriculum and instruction team members, really emphasizing core principles and components tied to that framework. Instructional coaches also played an integral role in providing ongoing support and feedback to ensure that the learning with regards to those core principles actually made it into their instructional practice. And in terms of this year and beyond, to kind of continue building that momentum on explicit instruction, building sites are continuing to monitor that implementation of research and evidence-based practices through instructional coaching and coaching cycles, building level data reviews, and developing action plans tied to components within explicit instruction, as well as kind of reviving the instructional rounds process at the elementary level. So what does explicit instruction mean when we talk about addressing the achievement gap or the discrepancy that we're seeing between our economically disadvantaged and not economically disadvantaged students? And so you're actually looking at a slide that was a part of the very first module that all staff received through those five targeted explicit instruction modules. And what this showcases is, students who are generally struggling to make progress are impacted most often by low executive functioning skills, which encompasses working memory, attention, impulse, control, emotion regulation, and frustration tolerance. And so when we think of students who are struggling to make those academic gains, all of the above or all of those four components are critical to the learning that students are engaging in. And knowing what we know from the studies done with neuroscience, humans really cannot learn well, if at all, without having those well-developed executive functioning skills. So knowing that neuroscience or the neuroscience behind those profile of students, this is what led the district to make the decision to move forward with the adoption of explicit instruction as the core instructional framework within our elementary sites. And that is because it is a research-based systematic approach to teaching that not only benefits all students, but it is especially effective for students with those low executive functioning skills that we know are so critical to the learning process. So that leads me into kind of the second phase of that three-year plan, which focuses primarily on the what, which is the usage of those effective resources. And so, like I said earlier, many of you received this information at Board Curriculum and Board Finance. But just to kind of give you a high-level overview, again, during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we engaged in a year-long curriculum adoption process with representation from multiple stakeholder groups, resulting in the selection of CKLA. This year, we have our CKLA pilot going on with two teachers per building with implementation support, not only from Amplify, the publishing company who publishes CKLA, but also integrated district support. And then moving into next year and beyond, we're looking at that district-wide K-5 CKLA implementation with targeted embedded Amplify and district support as well. And so once again, when we think about that achievement gap, why do high-quality instructional materials matter? And it's really because the access to high-quality, well-aligned instructional materials not only influence the learning directly for students, but also it influences teachers' instructional choices and behavior. And so when we think about instruction in particular, and I know this image is kind of small, we really, at that core, have the interaction between the materials, the teachers, and the students, which is kind of, as Dan referenced before, that sweet spot. And so high-quality instructional materials are a pivotal piece in addressing that achievement gap because of the research that we've seen surrounding the impact when students do not have consistent access to high-quality materials. So the research that was conducted by a nonprofit organization, TNTP, really honed in on this quantitative statistic that you see that in a single school year, the average student spends about five-hundred-and-eighty-one of seven-hundred-and-twenty available hours on assignments that are not of high quality. And this is particularly significant for students that are living in poverty, who tend to have less access to high-quality, standards-aligned materials than their peers. And so what CKLA does is they, it is a highly structured, evidence-based curriculum that will provide consistent access to not only that high-quality content, as Kirk referred to earlier, that knowledge building, but also that embedded opportunity for those assignments and tasks and activities that kids are engaging in to also be of high quality as well. Just because CKLA is an evidence-based program that is intended to address some of the statistics you see here on this slide.
I was just curious about that middle paragraph, that statistic. It sounds awfully subjective for somebody to say, this is high, this is high-quality, this is low-quality. I mean, is it based on a survey? Do you know what the methodology was for that?
No, it was based, and you can speak to maybe a little bit of it too, but it was based on essentially an analysis of engaging in class observations, other, met-analysis of other research studies. So a combination to really target that gap and opportunity that we see between high-income students and low-income, or students coming from high-income areas and low-income areas.
Yeah, we, we as human beings are actually quite not great at rating ourselves on different things and telling whether something's high-quality or not. So a lot of times in research, you'll see, it could be time to attend to task, it's time on task. So a lot of times in research, you'll see it could be time to attend to task, it's time on task, the ability to transfer information from one task to another task, the ability to put information together. And also, you're really looking at, is the, what you're, what the child is learning and, and knowing and being able to do, is that directly related to one of our critical standards in the, usually reading and math discipline? I know, it's, it's a sad number, Josie, you know?
Yeah, well, and I just wondered if they were really evaluating different curriculums across, you know, the United States that are used in poorer districts and wealthier districts, like our Journeys curriculum versus CKLA.
Things of, you know, teachers don't have anything, so they pull off the internet, they, you know, they, they scrounge themselves, I mean, that's all on that. I mean, so, I mean, there's definitely a, an element of qualitative, you know, versus quantitative analysis there. Um, but that is a reality, especially in a lot of poverty schools.
Or just keeping the kid busy. Just keep him busy. And if they're busy, they're learning.
Yeah. Did they rate journeys in this study?
No, I didn't talk specifically about it. And every teacher I've ever met is trying so hard to help their kid and help their kids. I've never met a, a teacher who's not. But there is science behind how we learn as human beings, and there are methods that are more effective and things that sometimes as humans feel really good to us, and there may be what we remember learning as, but they actually don't produce long-term gains, so.
And I think it's also important to highlight that this is a, a national study that was done in order to, you know, more succinctly identify the discrepancies and opportunities that students have across our nation. And as Dr. Van Wagner stated, um, many districts do not have access to any core curriculum. So then teachers are left to their own devices and being able to kind of piecemeal a variety of different, um, assignments and, and doing the best they can to do so. Um, but then because it doesn't have that critical scope and sequence, it's not structured, it's not systematic, we unintentionally create gaps for students because we don't have that clear alignment, um, of those materials across grade levels. And so I mentioned CKLA was, um, a highly structured, evidence-based, um, curricular resource. And so many of you have seen this slide, and so how do we know that it's evidence-based? And we know that through the third-party efficacy studies that have been conducted on Core Knowledge Language Arts. Um, primarily, once again, I want to highlight the findings you see that are outlined in that green, um, outlined box, um, uh, addressing those income-based achievement gaps. So as I said, the adoption of CKLA benefits all students. So we saw, um, or we saw through this efficacy study that, um, students coming from high-income areas saw that effect size of point four-four. So they're making a typical year's growth, um, through their experience. But our, um, students who are coming from low-income areas, um, actually saw that effect size of one point two-nine-nine. So they are making, um, a growth that is actively closing that achievement gap. Um, and I think that has also something to do with what I talked about earlier is um, access to high-quality instructional materials directly influences not only learning, but influences teachers' practices and the way that they deliver instruction to their students.
I think one of the things you have to keep in mind is every year when we assess students, the standards and the stakes increase too. Right? So like, just for you as a student to stay at grade level, you have to make adequate growth to stay there. So when you think about the kids in that gap, yeah, Spaff, like every year, we tend to see less and less kids hit the proficiency because every year, the stakes are harder and more difficult to hit then. Does that kind of make sense? And so you're right, like.
Yeah.
And then shifting into that teacher causal factor, um, as you can see, there have been, um, uh, uh, many options provided in terms of historical and current supports and what we're anticipating in terms of being on the horizon. But, um, just wanted to point out, as, as someone mentioned earlier, I can't exactly remember who, researchers have, um, consistently shown that teachers' qualifications and their knowledge and their skills um, are one of the most significant factors in determining student achievement. And so it is advantageous for a district to determine how are we best supporting our teachers through opportunities of a professional learning, as well as structured time for collaboration, um, to be able to, um, directly impact the, the student growth and achievement. And so from that research, um, teachers' qualifications, their skills can sometimes account for forty to up to ninety percent um, of student success on achievement test. Um, many of the achievement tests that Dan, um, has presented on, um, earlier in our presentation. And so I'm going to spotlight, um, really the last phase of this three-year plan to build coherence and educator development and experiences. And that's really focusing on building, um, understanding and calibrating on the why. Um, so what is the science of reading and how do we ensure that we have clarity and understanding of the foundational components tied to the science of reading? So that when we have access to those high-quality instructional materials, we understand how that program is built and why it was built in the way it was. Um, and so starting in, or during this year, um, staff have participated in a year-long comprehensive professional plan, or professional learning plan facilitated by the Reading League, which is a nationally-recognized nonprofit organization. And their intent is to really focus on building knowledge and capacity in the critical components that are tied to the science of reading. And so then thinking about how teachers are going to take that learning and apply it into next year and beyond, it's really ensuring that we're deepening the integration of those fundamental components tied to the science of reading through leveraging that evidence-based, um, core program, um, CKLA. And that is really going to be through that commitment to bridge that no-do gap, which is what, um, is pretty typically referred to in education. We're really, really good at understanding all the theoretical components tied to best practices. But, um, where we kind of fall short on, I think, as a nation and even a world issue at times is how do we take these theoretical components and actually put it into our practice on a daily basis? Um, and so we know that through implementing CKLA, that's where we're really going to see our knowledge of the science of reading translating into those consistent type, uh, high-quality practices in every classroom across our district. And so the last thing I'm going to highlight for you today is what did this plan look like? Um, so, uh, the Reading League really focused on building, like I said, that comprehensive plan based on two, uh, theoretical frameworks, um, tied to the science of reading called the Simple View of Reading, as well as Scarborough's Reading Rope. And so you'll see a list of the, uh, variety of topics that were talked about, um, or that sessions were built upon, um, really starting from the developing understanding and the big ideas tied to the science of reading, um, specifically what that means for instruction, as well as our assessment system. So partnering with the Reading League has provided, um, our curriculum and instruction team with, um, options to kind of rethink our assessment plan. And are we assessing in the best way possible? And are we, um, are we providing access to, um, assessments that give us the data that's going to help us make the most aligned instructional decisions moving forward? Um, and then, uh, we've kind of engaged in learning surrounding phonemic awareness, phonics, oral language development, as Kirk spoke, um, to earlier, and, um, as well as the simple view of writing, because we know writing and reading are so interconnected with one another that we have to make sure we're leveraging, um, the research, um, done kind of on both sides of, of those frameworks as well.
And, and just to chime in, you know, our, our current grant that we use to pay for CKLA, the thirty-five J grant had to include a component of the science of reading. And we're going to see some other grants we're going to go through in Board Curriculum. Thirty-five M is a grant coming through the state, and again, the state's requiring that part of this grant funding, you have to have it embedded in the science of reading.
I'll also share, just like instructional coaches have played a critical role in ensuring that these components actually go into classrooms and teachers are supported and being able to implement those, they are also, um, a really great, um, integral support for teachers in ensuring that, um, teachers' knowledge of the science of reading are, um, starting to kind of come through in those instructional practices as well.
So to focus, uh, just a moment on students, I wanted to, to take a second and look at our spotlight, um, specifically with our Student Support Network. Several other things there, um, our MTSS, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. When we look at tier one, that's every student that we have in TCAP receives tier one support. Uh, the tier-two support we talk about, that is, for the most part, our tier-two support is grant-funded. And those funds come through our Title and At-Risk. And we talk about tier-three support, that they're specialized support. So MTSS, though we're not going to focus on it now, is obviously a large part of where these funds go to. All the, the other, um, items we have with I-RIPS, I-RIPS are those individual reading plans um, that go through the state as far as the third-grade reading law. We have parenting programs that, that Misty has promoted through social work, and also our school success liaisons. So specifically with our Student Support Network, Student Support Network, free education-related services, non-academic support, um, to help overcome those obstacles, uh, that students face. A lot of, a lot of these students follow McKinny Vento, homeless students. Um, Katie Cubish, that, that kind of heads up our Student Support Network, uh, just super passionate, goes above and beyond. Um, and all of these students, you know, are going to fall under that idea of, um, economically disadvantaged students. Right? So we think about, of, of these students, how many of these students, um, parents are filling out the form? I'd say very few, especially, we're talking about homeless students that have access. Right? So that's something that we're going to continue to, to look at on our end is how, how do we help, right? How do we support, make sure we have access to these? We do these at open houses, but I think as a, as a school, and we've talked about this, we can be more deliberate in making sure that we, we get these students the support they need. Because if that state-free, that state-free lunch and breakfast goes away, that's a big part of, of these kids' days.
I have a question about the, what's the difference between the sixty, I'll get closer to the mic. The sixty-four students living unsheltered and the forty-three students who are unaccompanied homeless youth? Is the latter a subset of the form?
Lack of a parent. Which, which one were you looking at? So the sixty-four?
First line and the last line. So there's sixty-four who are unsheltered, and there's forty-three who are unaccompanied homeless youth. Are the forty-three part of the sixty-four? Do we know? There's overlap?
I believe so.
Yeah, yeah. It could be, yeah, yeah.
But you can have a kid that's living unsheltered in the pines with the parent as well, so.
Which is reflected in that sixty-four.
Yeah.
But what you're saying, yes, that forty-eight is a part of the sixty-four.
And I think as the students get older, and I'm sure Jesse has experienced with this at the high school, unaccompanied homeless youth would be high school kids, couch surfing, right? Um, they might not be necessarily unsheltered, but they don't have necessarily a stable place to live with a parent.
And doubled up, does that just mean they're staying in a friend's house, or?
Doubled up can be any situation in which, for instance, mom and, uh, family loses their housing and moves in with aunt. And so then they're doubled up, or we, we see this quite a bit, um, they lose their housing, move in with grandpa and grandma. They're doubled up, they're then McKinny Vento. Some of that, so some of these supports that, uh, that we follow, for instance, we have a student, let's say, um, they lose their house, they move out to Kingsley, uh, they have to move in with grandpa and grandma. They're now doubled up McKinny Vento, then our, kind of that law kicks in, and we must still transport those kids to our district. So we will set up busing programs to make sure that we do all weekend as a school district to make sure their lives are a little less interrupted by what they're going through.
And we will have that. And we'll even have the elementary, we've had situations of kids in the pines that maybe, you know, they were at another school, Pines isn't within the Willow Hill boundaries, but they were at another school, we will transport them to keep them at their regular school under McKinny Vento.
Okay.
Um, some financial statistics here as far as the, the money that is used with the Student Support Network, um, through different foundations and grants, business and individuals, and fundraising events. Um, and there's additional funds, some of our, these are the funds they raise for those students. But there's also general fund and at-risk funds that go to paying for the people that work in these particular departments.
And we do get a small amount of federal grant, a part of McKinny Vento that pays for Katie, but not fully. And she does five counties, not just our school district.
Okay.
Okay, so current data.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because obviously I talk about and try and push it as much as I can on this, because I think it's one of the most critical things we can do to, for a lot of things. Is that fundraising, is that increased?
Yes, but.
I mean, it's still.
You know, Ty asked this question, does it meet the need though?
No.
No, but, but that is fundraising that, you know, we've done, that we get support just anonymously. You know, something that I think we got to try and find some ways to do more. Um, but, you know, it is hard to, I mean, Katie stretches every penny and every dollar, you know, of that. Um, you know, but that's money that's raised.
Forty thousand, now it's eighty, which is still.
Yeah, it has, it has increased, and you know, but unfortunately, also the need has increased since, you know, we, because really Katie slipped into that, you know, stepped into that role.
So current data, Kurt's going to quickly talk about our, our balanced assessment system.
Yeah, so we're going to actually take a look at a couple of different data sets. And I just kind of want to set the stage a little that we, our attempt is to have a balanced assessment system. I, I think I alluded to this a bit earlier, that M-step is incredibly important. And when we get that information, it's not super actionable. So the further to the left we go, towards the lagging, or the leading indicators, is where we get our most bang for the buck in terms of, um, analyzing data and impacting instruction and looking at student progress. Um, so we're going to take a look at some NWA and M-step data. And also, I just want everyone to know that there, there are other data sets that we also analyze on a regular basis to try to make those instructional adjustments and create, um, groupings of students so that we can, we can address the needs that are.
So I started here, and I, I'm going to end here too, and I just pass this out, because when I was going through the slideshow and I was looking at, you know, as far as the CNI team, where could we go? And we talk about effective metrics, timeframes to measure TCAP's progress in closing the achievement gap, I continue to go back to the slide over and over again to figure out what I missed and what I was looking at. So when I go through these slides with the data, I found it's nice to refer to, ask questions as we figure out. Because as far as our data goes, this is super high-level, as Kirk just mentioned. We could get down to, you know, phonemic awareness, phonics, letter sounds, right? But to try to keep it to high level to, to, to kind of keep our, our conversation focused, uh, but also to keep the questions in front of you, is what exactly do we want to, kind of base these goals off of? So what did I start, I wanted to start first to just to talk about, and this is an example data set, not one to necessarily determine metrics off of, but to talk about what is proficiency. I talked briefly about this at Board Curriculum, and the idea that when we look at a third-grade, um, M-step data and it says that, um, only forty percent of our kids are proficient at reading, and TCAP, right away, we say sixty percent of our kids can't read. If you put a book in front of them, they couldn't read. That's, that's not true. Um, each, each test has subcategories, and you can see that when they take this data and they determine what is proficient, you know, it's reading, writing, listening, research. So there's several different aspects that do determine what proficiency is on any test. And then another thing that they never really talk about, but we get reports on, is the idea of your end step, you can be at or near proficiency. So when we talk about, and this can sometimes, this varies, so this is just a general statement, but when we talk about not proficient or at or near proficiency, that can be up to a twenty percent difference. And what we talk about is at or near proficiency. It's a nice category to look at sometimes because it encompasses the fact that, one, they're less than a year behind. Um, or they might have one area in particular that we need to target, or they could just have a bad testing day. So that at, at or near proficiency actually gives us a little more information than just that hard cutoff of the kid is proficient or the kid is not proficient.
So when we, when there is that cutoff by NWVA or M-step or whatever, um, for proficiency, it's going to be somewhere in the middle of this green zone, right? It's not going to be the two, the green and the blue?
No, the blue is above all the time.
Yeah.
So that green, yeah, it'll be somewhere in that green, yeah, as far as where that at or near is for economically and then non-economically. We won't see that, and you only see that hard cutoff as far as proficiency goes. We make our own line as far as, um, NWA goes. NWA does a good job, and I'm going to show that also on the slides of actually breaking this down even further. And then we can maybe talk about some, some growth, some targets related to growth instead of proficiency or both. Um, but as far as the graphs, I'm going to show you moving forward, they're all that, kind of that hard proficiency line. So just to have the idea of what proficiency is, and it's not a hard cutoff as far as they're not proficient, these kids can't read, there's a lot that goes into determining what actual proficiency is. So I went through and I, I decided to go this way with it, is look at, first, we're going to look at M-step. And this is third through fifth grade math, these are the only grades that take M-step is for elementary school. And I'm focused today on elementary school. And this is third through fifth grade math, these are the only grades that take M-step is for elementary school and I'm focused today on elementary school. And I'm giving, you know, the reference to the state because in certain circumstances. I mean, we all, we often talk about, you know, when you compare T caps to the state, you know, not a great comparison. You know, we outperform, but if you look closely at this graph, for instance, a couple of highlights of this. One, if you look for, for instance, at our fourth grade proficiency, when we talk about, again, the top is not economically disadvantaged. The bottom is economically disadvantaged, and again, we see that twenty-five to thirty percent gap when we talk about achievement gap. But we look, for instance, for just some things that stuck out to me on this graph when I looked through it. One is the idea of, we, we look at the statewide graph is, is fairly consistent as it goes across year to year. Well, ours bounces around a little bit, a little bit has to do with that, obviously the sample size, but when we go to reading, you definitely don't see those. So you wonder, you know, one year that's missing, that nineteen-twenty COVID year and, and obviously the dip we seen all of our graphs for twenty-twenty-one. And how that affected math and how that affected reading. But I think that's important to keep in mind when we talk about grade level or subject area and we choose or both, how that achievement gap can differ. Another thing that I found interesting about this graph is when we specifically look at our achievement gap. The, actually the most, the best results we see as far as closing the achievement gap is specifically looking at, you know, that fourth and fifth grade. Twenty-three and twenty-four, right? So if we look at that, there's two reasons why that, that achievement gap is, is less, right? We had almost a three to four percent increase in one year in our achievement in that fourth and fifth grade. However, our economic, our non-economically disadvantaged also came down, right? So this is only some of the only graphics we see where we actually have, you know, twenty-one, twenty-two percent as far as our gap goes in proficiency rates. So that's something to keep in mind is that when, when we determine this and we close the achievement gap, we're always looking for that more than a year's growth. So that gap is not actually, I mean, we can celebrate closing the achievement gap, but what kind, how much of a celebration is it when our non-economically disadvantaged are coming down? To meet the economically disadvantaged. Something to clarify, if we make a metric, we need to clarify exactly what it looks like for both groups. And then our reading, as I said before, looks, it looks a little different than our math, one is higher as far as proficiency rates go. And with higher, both, both, both groups are higher. So unlike our math, where we're looking more in our twenty-five to thirty, our reading definitely is higher. And we do see an uptick for third, fourth and fifth grade for economically disadvantaged, moving from again. That twenty-two, twenty-three to the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So it, it's, it's a long-term gain, right? As far as we make, if, if we make these goals as far as our metrics around it, you know, just saying, that's why proficiency is tricky over time. Because we can see some bumps now and again, obviously it's a long haul of three to five year and how that slow line starts to go up. The questions on those two?
Well, I mean, I, I like someone, Kurt, and you said you had a goal of one hundred percent proficiency, are you talking to M-step? I mean, that's my goal too.
Yeah, I mean.
All kids.
It's going to take time.
Yeah, I know.
Like, I think we're trying to chunk it out so we can get there, but yeah.
But with, with that, and I, and I agree in education, that's something like we, we say at board meetings, right? That we want a hundred percent proficiency, I get that. But there, there are certain circumstances we get to, right? We, we do have to talk about special education and learning disabilities, right? In the state of Michigan, when they look at a disability, I mean, sometimes there's special ed services that are in place for kids. Initially, we look at, you know, they test as if there, there's a disability in place, but there's a lot of gaps in their learning. We fill those gaps and those kids then be, then no longer qualify for an IEP. There are kids with learning disabilities that, that can progress, but as far as proficiency, that may never happen. And it's not something that we can fix by more and more and more intervention, right? They, the state of Michigan, when it looks at a learning disability, the same as we write an IEP for that disability. You would write for a deaf person or a blind person, right? And that's the same idea, no matter what accommodations we put in for, for that, that kind of physical ailment, there's no way that person's going to be able to see or hear. Based on what we do, so just something to keep in mind. And the other aspect of that is that EL part, right? That we have, we have a fairly transient population that comes in and out, we're, we're talking ten to fifteen kids, right? At Traverse Heights that go up and down throughout the year. And, and the proficiency, where not only are we layering on the fact that they don't speak English. And we know that we can accommodate some of our, our tests with, with including some Spanish translation. But at the end of the day, I, I, obviously we want them to get to proficiency, but that is yet another hurdle we look at. So that is sometimes the argument when you get into that, that difference between proficiency and growth, right? Where we want all those kids to grow, but just to say that we didn't, that I feel like, you know, there's a level of failure for not at a hundred percent, isn't exactly accurate.
Yeah, and I, I just appreciate the goal and the, and the desire to get there. And, and as far as I know, this, this body, we do not have a goal around proficiency yet. And I hope that in less than three weeks, when we talk about strategic plan, that we can also have a, an ambitious goal like Blair and Mr. Rini do.
Mr. Rini, I, when did you set that goal? Was that for the current school year or is it like a five-year or ten-year plan?
I'm looking at, at it, we set it this school year as a five, like a five-year plan to, to get there. And part of what I'd like to be able to do through that process is utilize some of those other assessments to be predictive. And show our, our progress towards that end, because the other tricky component is I've also got half of, half of my students do not take M-step. And so if we, you know, I, I utilize NWA to kind of help paint that growth picture. Because not all of our students take the, the M-step and because it's only third through fifth grade. So we, you know, I'm of the mind that if we, if we nail our, our diagnostic and our formative assessment and then we see. Significant progress in NWA, that then becomes predictive to what we'll see down the line in M-step. And that's, you know, obviously it's a super ambitious goal and I understand, I'm right there with, with, with Dan, like. Some of this too is I've got a five-year goal, but this kiddo is with us for the next eight, nine, ten years. And so sometimes there is that zoom out that we need to engage in that, you know, proficiency. May come further down the road and proficiency might just translate to this kiddo graduated from high school. And is able to read and, and do math and acquire employment and contribute positively to our, our broader community. And that's the, I mean, that's the end goal, that's why I'm here.
Did you say it was for a specific grade, like fifth grade and?
Third, third through fifth.
Third through fifth, okay, M-step, yeah, okay.
I'll report back.
Now he's really under the gun.
I know, I'm starting to sweat.
I think we're all, we're all, I, I'd like to think that we're all under the gun, right? And I'd like to think that we will do all we can to support our superintendent to set ambitious goal. Because I really think this, this opportunity with this next strategic plan, I really hope. That we will, as, as a body with the levers we have with policy, with budget, with setting goals and supporting our superintendent, that we can also set ambitious goals.
And I'm going to have the impression that every building administrator sets internal goals like this, they're just not publicized. You know, it took you coming to a board meeting for us to know that, which is not a level of insight that we've had to date. But maybe one of you could speak to that, what kind of goals are there?
So, and I think that it's a conversation about, you know, as we've had some transition of, of that happening with it. And I think that it is important that, you know, it's said all along that when I started that. You know, we've come closer to a school district and a district of schools. And so I do think collectively having that conversation, that element, you know, so much we've come into one focus on, whether it be explicit instruction, curriculum, those things that. We're not identifying, I think that, you know, that's the next step of conversation so that our principals all know. You know, if there's a metric we're going to look at with that is important. I'd also like to mention that we're talked a lot about NWA, do know that NWA is really a, a option of a state test. So the state requires us to have a benchmark assessment that they pay for. There are a few choices, four or five.
There's three, yeah.
Three?
High ready, Star Renaissance and NWA.
And NWA, okay, so three that you have that choice from of those benchmark assessments to take. So it does come into the state assessment and as Kirk said about a balanced assessment. And the, and WBA is probably one of the most popular, I'd say high ready probably second. So, you know, that's a, that's again, a nationally, you know, benchmark that our state does, doesn't. But, you know, again, when you triangulate kind of the data to look, that's something to think about.
And, and the nice thing about NWA is you, you get results instantly, right? I mean, like teachers can see how their students did the next day and it does chart the results. Both by their achievement and their growth levels, which I love, like I, let's say we have a kid who's two years behind, but that kid made a year and a half worth of growth. Well, gosh, like that's a celebration, we're on the right track, right? And so NWA gets that M-step, we do not get the scores back until the end of June. And parents and kids don't get their scores back until that next fall. It's very common when we send scores back that parents and kids ask us what this even is, because it's been so long between the two. It makes it hard, right? Nobody runs a race and then finds out their time six months after.
I, I think many of us on this board can relate as parents, when our kids come home with a sticky note, hey, mom or dad, I got this score compared to. You know, the last NWA test, and it's like instant gratification, they know their growth, they're excited, they know their target for the end of the year. M-step, you know, if we parents get those emails, it's like snooze, hit the snooze button, right? The NDA, NWA is very, you know, the infographics that, that come with that too are good.
Well, it's hard to course correct if you're, you know, you're getting six-month delayed data, it's hard to figure out where your opportunities are.
But it's something to throw away, you know, but again, when you triangulate and put it all together and you have a, a balanced assessment picture. Just something to think about.
It will require by law to take the M-step, I mean, there's no getting around it.
Right.
Yeah.
So just to look at another data set, again, I focused on, and Mr. Rini mentioned that, you know, an NWA, NWA currently K-eight assessment that we use. And again, it's usable immediately, like immediately after the student finishes. The teacher can get the score and then the day after they can start to receive reports back. And then as a group, as a, as a data team in the school, we do data meetings now in the fall and in the winter. And then to create these plans that we talked about. So if, if we look at this graph, for instance, we look at, so this is broken up, again, NWA breaks up into five different categories. When we're making plans for students, we focus on the low, low average. So if you look at all of our students, you know, seventeen-hundred-and-ninety-one of them, you know, thirty-three percent, like six hundred kids. Those six hundred kids, I can guarantee all of them have a plan, right? Every single kid in that group, whether it's special ed, whether there's a task plan, whether there's a plan for a five oh four. Whether there's a plan for when they do their data meetings, they go tier one, which means they talk about how can I teach to all kids? But then there's also a tier two component, which we do reading and math intervention. So all those kids that are in there do have a plan about how do they make more than a year's growth with extra support? And then when we break it up into economically versus not economically disadvantaged, again, we do see that gap. One way that we use this as far as when we talk about buildings and how they look at data, we did a data meeting with principals in the fall when they pulled out their data. And when they also went through the same data protocols their teachers went through, looking at more of a large scale, right? Looking at building and district data is how do you move kids throughout that scale, right? And that's one thing we, we see as far as the growth idea, right? So if you're the first instance, look at economically disadvantaged, we're looking at, you know, give or take about fifty percent. Of economically disadvantaged kids there are low to low average. Could one of our goals be moving ten to twenty percent of those kids out of those bands over the next three to five years? Does that mean those kids are going to be proficient? Not necessarily, we're going to have that hard cutoff, but we're going to have definitely, we're going to see some growth within those kids. Or when we talk about one of our goals and, you know, Kirk mentioned again, the idea of, of a hundred percent of kids. We could then move to that first column, we're talking about those seventeen-hundred-and-ninety-one kids. We could make a goal around those thirty-three, thirty-four percent of those kids and how to move those or grow those kids out of that low to low average band. And then reading, same idea, we, we do see, always see a discrepancy, if you ever notice on all of our graphs, three to five. Is that our reading data, we definitely have more kids as far as that high, high average, average or proficiency than we do with math. And so that's something as a district, if you want to know like plans that we're working on, obviously that explicit instruction is one. But specifically what we see that our math team is kind of, has a plan around, they're currently doing is in their, in our early release days is looking at. And I talked about this at board curriculum, that fluency and fraction work. Because that's where we see specifically, if we drill down, right? The nice thing again about NWA that you don't necessarily get for M-step reports, we can drill down to subcategories, we can't get down to actual. We have another data set that we use for math called Delta Math, where you can get down to state standard, that's always very useful because you know exactly what to teach. But those help and what we've seen time after time is that we have to continue to work with our curriculum to attack those, that fluency and those fractions.
Jesse, how long do we use Delta Math?
For a while, however, and, and Mr. Rini can talk, but it's more systematic now. Now we're using it in every single building, we've got staff who are trained on it, who are able to deliver the instruction, who are able to monitor the kids. You know, skills and progress too and, and know how to do it. Math is a really, is, is a tricky one, there's a lot of misconception on how you teach math. And we're, we're working really hard on ensuring that we're using the right science of teaching and learning around that, yeah.
So as long as Delta Math, I mean, I did Delta Math at Westwoods, we're talking five years ago, but this year was our first year. And Brittany and I worked together as far as doing these data teams and doing these data meetings. ELA, we've been doing for several years and everybody was doing one. This is the first year that every building is doing Delta Math and every building is doing math data meetings.
Is that the same as math expressions or did it replace?
So math expressions is our tier one curriculum, our Delta Math, we like to use, again, when we talk about the MTSS system, that is more of our tier two. We also use, I mean, if we have Delta Math, it comes, the nice thing about Delta Math, if it comes back and we see a, a particular Michigan standard that all the kids are low on. We can use that as a tier one instruction, which means the teacher takes the whole grade level through it again. However, most of the time we see some small groups, student stays in Delta Math between two and three weeks. Gets proficient at that one standard, maybe it's like two digit, two-digit addition. And then they move out of that group and another student would move into the group. So they do several different groups over five to six standards throughout the year.
So the, I think the unique, relatively unique part about Delta Math is not only it's a diagnostic screener, but then it also has the embedded. Intervention lessons that correspond. So when you get the data back, you have actionable lessons that, and teachers can take. And so it's, again, it's like in addition to that tier one math expressions instruction.
And just one thing we have been working on with Delta Math is, especially when we talk about schools. You know, those non-title schools who don't necess, they don't have the title fund, so they have to use their at-risk funds. And this is just an example at Westwood, but my at-risk funds went to, the majority went to K-three reading, right? Because that's our basis and a lot of the Delta Math was pushed into more of a tier one small group model that the teacher did. So moving some funding around, we're able to do more and more of actually hiring a person to go into the schools. Again, that comes out to about, if you do an A, it's about fifty thousand dollars that can help pull those groups and, and do that intervention with a little more fidelity.
What year are we into our math expressions multi-year contract?
We just did a renewal a couple of years ago and that's when it moved from HMH to Hindman, that's going to fully take effect this next fall. I want to say, I think you guys have, I think we have four more years on this. But I think there's a lot we can do around math instruction that doesn't involve a change of the curriculum. I, I think with ELA, us making the commitment to a research-based instructional program. I, I think it's a game changer, can I say that word, game changer? With math, math expressions is a nationally recognized curriculum, there's a lot of science and research behind it. I do think there's some instructional pedagogy with math, we could hold on, get on and support our teachers.
Thank you.
That goes back to that original side with the idea of what's next. And in looking at specifically, do we start with elementary achievement? You know, that growth versus achievement, student groups, ELA or math. Do the goals involve funding and then that state assessment versus that national assessment? So I'm not sure exactly how the conversation rolls from here, but as far as, you know, a curriculum and instruction team recommendation. It's something that we would continue to look at, maybe bring forth during board curriculum or another board meeting, or obviously we need input from the board also.
Yeah, I mean, everyone can go, I want to stop by just to thank you for the general presentation, I think. Probably going to offend everyone in the room by how I say this, but I, when I was talking, when I talked to parents. Probably going to offend everyone in the room by how I say this, but uh, I, when I was talking, when I talk to parents, a lot of the time, I think the general. I wouldn't say consensus, but there's a strong belief that like as a teacher, as an administrator. Get teachers, they graduate, they go through some minor like for professional development. As administrators, we're there to keep things in the tracks or you are there to keep things in the tracks and it's not like the scientific nature of what you've just gone through. So I, although I have high hopes, I, I really hope that the exposure of this was wider because. Even for me, and I knew what you guys were doing, for, for me, just the scientific nature of cause and effect and, and multi-years of study. Was uh, super enlightening and, and awesome personally. I really want to thank you guys for the level of knowledge you had. And I thought I was uh, after doing this for four years had come up a little bit and now I'm feeling way down here again, so thank you.
Well, also I hope that we don't forget science and social studies. You know, sometimes you see. Schools get so focused on the tasks that they miss all the extra little application. Across all the subjects. And I'm hoping that we don't get lost here.
I, I agree that, I, I'm happy that the C K L A does, we, we just actually did some, a work last night. We met with our E L A team on. There's a, you can choose different progression of units within the C K L A. Um, program that they provide with you than the knowledge series versus the um, the skill series. And a lot of that knowledge series revolves around that social studies and science content. And then, you know, and then secondarily, you know, the idea that reading is so pivotal for that comprehension piece. Of when we talk about social studies and, and science is that um, hyper-focus that we have in it, so the kids can explore those different subjects.
And then other thing to Misty, I really appreciate what you're doing. Because there's a lot of evidence that disrupted classrooms are very difficult classrooms to learn in. So appreciate very much the work there.
And it, I just wanted to say that having uh, served on the curriculum committee for six years, um, so much of this, watching the. You know, our progression um, through curriculum, I, I appreciate so much. And as a board, sometimes we talk about wanting to serve on finance and wanting to serve on curriculum, but the value of actually serving on a committee for a very long time. We, we have a deeper knowledge and understanding, which um, is, is so helpful. Um, just because um, you know, having gone through a lot of this, um, I, I've been there. I've heard these conversations and, and so. Um, just again, appreciate so much you guys taking the time out to, to do a study session on this. I think it's um, very helpful. And thanks for all your hard work and for being here.
One more thing. And Mr. Kurt, you, you were here almost a year ago. Um, talking about elementary school and, and you were talking about the programs in the schools. So T caps has not been hiding from this as an issue. And I think that's important to recognize as well. Thank you.
I echo all that and I just want to say, I appreciate you're synthesizing all this together. I agree with Erica that. We've, we had those study sessions last year in academic achievement, elementary, middle school and secondary. But it's nice to see everything pulled together here. And it, I just was curious to my fellow trustees. Um, do you want to tackle? Do we want to give up some preliminary thoughts here? To, to help give direction?
I would love the board to give whatever guidance, um, cause obviously then we're going, we're going to go through strategic planning and. Obviously one of the process that we do have to, I, I believe is, you know, as a board, we do need to give as much guidance on this as possible. But then it's the administration's job to come back and say, well, it's reasonable, why it's reasonable. Yes, we can talk about it, but like ultimately speaking. You know, I actually have a little less idea of what is reasonable now with, with what we've talked about, so. It's a, I know eye-opening, but I think you guys probably have a really good idea what's feasible, um, and what's a stretch. And we obviously want to tie it to your point. I also want it to be ambitious. Um, I want to know the realistic, you know, if we do this. We should feel good. I don't, I love you a hundred percent, but I don't think that that's realistic in uh, the district for the next three years. So um, yeah, what is that number? And again, there's the closing the gap is one part of it. Um, and that's what I think we were focusing on, but then the other part that we uh, yeah, I think we have a lot of room to grow both as well. So um, would I, and I'm not saying you can have both, but would I prefer a ten percent increase in proficiency on. Across the board or five percent closing of the gap? I prefer ten percent across the board. So um, maybe we can have both and whatever that shakes down. So I do, would love to get as much feedback as possible, so you guys can start thinking about it for the strategic plan.
You know, I'll remind the board that all of our team will be a part of that strategic plan process as well. They will all be there.
Yeah, and I, and I just appreciate the conversation because the, the numbers are staggering and it's not always easy to talk about. Um, so I do appreciate the conversation and I think just having a conversation is a success. Uh, so many good slides. My favorite slide maybe though is number four, highly effective and successful leaders. You know, and I love to hear that this is, they start their, their meetings off in the buildings and I wonder if maybe we can also start our meetings off here. With our job one, being able to significantly improve student achievement and close achievement gaps. And job two is be able to manage all of our aspects of our job in a manner that allows us to stay on the job long enough to do number one. And I think it's uh, important to know our job is, is that number one. Um, and I'd love to see it really explicit, really clear, really direct in this next strategic plan. And I challenge us to not be okay with twenty five, thirty percent achievement historically. And I know that's hard. Um, you know, and, and the United Way is doing wonderful work. They had a story in the ticker about all these different policies and strategies that they're doing to help working families. Um, but we all can all agree that education is the passport out of poverty. And I think we have a moral and ethical imperative to do that all we can. And when I say we, I'm talking about us, right? The seven of us. Um, so I'm really looking forward to the conversation on April eighth. Um, and, and I need experts to, to know what is um, doable and feasible and achievable. But also it'll take some political will and public support to do hard things.
Now, I will say that this isn't uh, the board's goal. I mean, the board's goal is to hold the superintendent accountable to allow him to do this. So we do have to make sure that we separate the fact that, you know, we are not uh, directly. You know, very indirectly, but we're not directly uh, involved in these two items. So we do have to make sure we do keep that.
So we're not involved as improving student achievement?
We are involved in making sure the superintendent is, is the right, we have the right superintendent with the right voluntary process, with the right policies. Which does go towards that, but that is by definition, no.
I think you're both saying the same things. We're all part of the same government.
Yeah, I said, I said indirectly we are. And as a district, these are our goals, but as a board, that may, may not be.
We set the vision and the administration implements and manages.
That's just why I was wanting to make sure we had the separation.
Well, I think, I mean, I just, I think we do have to be careful with that. Um, you know, I mean, I trust that our leaders, um, you know, I'm. I'm not an educator, so I trust that our leaders will guide us um, with what um, goals we can set. Um, and we, you know, can monitor those from.
Yeah, I want that.
What, what's that?
I want that.
Yeah, right.
Um, and do anything I can to support that.
Right.
So Mr. Tyz, we're going back to your slide about what's next. I don't mind, I don't mind taking a shot at, you know, my thoughts on this. Um, your first question is, do we only look at elementary achievement? And I said this at curriculum. I know that the, the earlier, the younger a student for intervention, you know, the better. But I don't want to give up on our current secondary students. I really, I see where the wheels can really fall off in middle school. You know, that's where kids are, they're no longer supervised as much. They're not littles anymore, but they're also not ready for college applications. And so that's where I see boys and girls kind of drifting off away from school. So I, I feel like the focus on academics there is still important and I sure don't want to give up on our high school students either. So I mean, me personally, I'd be, I would feel best about a metric that's really K through twelve and an average. And you know, to your second question, growth. I don't think we can come up as a board with like a seventy percent average proficiency score. But we can look at growth. No, because growth, that's going to look different for every kid, but if you measure growth, it's a percentage from their base and not an artificial number.
I, I just think that the next element was that would be when we specifically look for, I think K eight growth is, is super possible. With, you know, the idea of N W A. Um, there, there are some growth components also that you can use with M step. They just lag so far behind. Um, but as a growth proponent for nine twelve, I think Jesse could talk to more, could be a trick measure. If that P S A T, S A T or graduation rates are what would be best, the best goal there.
Yeah, you don't have the kind of, you know, measurements, you know, that are, that are consistent.
S A T is not the Michigan.
Correct.
Standards.
Correct.
Yeah, I do want to, like, I feel like it's also hard when, and I'm not saying we give up by any means, but like to have measurable results. You'll see if, if you do really well in the beginning and that's going to work, said even before, even then they're in the system, if you can narrow that gap. Before they even get to us, then, then that's great. Like, and if we can fo- we know if we do that, it will go through the system. Like, so if we can increase early and increase everyone when they come in, we do know that in every year they go up.
Understood, but I, I just don't want to give up on today's, you know, middle schoolers who will be in high school soon and.
You know, one, one that's received a lot of attention, I think do so, and I think we have room to grow and, and something to think about is our graduation rate. I think that, you know, um, again, to Kirk's point. Our goal is to graduate every kid, you know, with a high school diploma. Now, are there some measurements of some kids that are on certificates of completion? That are special ed and, you know, there's built into their I E P, same kind of thought, but that is a metric that's statewide right now. I think that um, especially our at-risk kids, um, many that have been at T C high. I think that's something we're really trying hard to, you know, get to that point to improve. So that, that's at least a metric, I think, from a secondary standpoint, that is a, a high point, you know, it's something that we have room in. And, you know, I, I, I made a comment in one of the articles that I was interviewed for that. If you don't have a high school diploma right now, it is awfully hard to get out of poverty. You know, and so I think that's a measurement that again, we can continue to grow at as a district and that is very high profile sort of area.
Our district average right now for uh, high school graduation is what?
Eighty-nine, I want to say.
I, I think it's like, yeah, low nineties, yeah.
But, but our, our two comprehensive high schools are in the low to mid nineties, but again, still room to grow, you know. But then T C high is one that we have really tried to focus on and, and Jen's doing one heck of a job of working on that staff. Of revamping to make that personalized learning in that element, but those are some of our kids that need that diploma the most. To be able to move and be, you know, career, college, whatever that dream is, they have ready, but have had many, many, you know, um. Things that have maybe kept them traditionally from that, that we've got to figure out a way to do better.
Kurt Rainey, then we, a hundred percent. Graduation rate. But she uh.
But recognizing there are some kids that it's not appropriate for. You know, our, some of our students that are my Kai, you know, in that element in that way that, again, I'm all for pushing the envelope, like, you know. Like, I don't believe in calling it in the first inning on that either, on any kid, but there are, there are realities like Dan talked about. That what that I E P team of professionals feel is, is appropriate for that student, you know, to be able to achieve.
Now, to, to the point of coming back to, you know, we, we're going to go into strategic plan, which is a three-year process. So we're only talking, what are we trying to achieve in three years? So I don't think getting twenty percent is reasonable. Well, first of all, we're not going to see the results of this uh, and on graduation rate until.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's wrong to set the, you know.
A five year.
Is a term.
But I was going to say like ultimately, we could have a separate set of goals.
But what are your progress metrics? I think is what you're trying to look at. I think that's what Kurt's talked about. What are the progress metrics?
It is a separate part of the discussion. We can definitely develop like where we want that to be. Cause again, increasing graduation rate is uh, a lot different to, you've got a lot of catch-up to do. It's going to go through the system.
And I was going to say, I don't feel like those two goals, attendance or graduation from high school. And, you know, academic achievement are mutually exclusive. I think we could do both. You know, we could look at, at P S A T and S A T, nine through twelve scores, just the way we're looking at K through eight with N W E A. And yes, we have a three-year strategic plan intentionally, cause we know that they can get stale. But it doesn't prevent us from setting growth targets for like one year, three year and five years out.
No, and it really shouldn't have the ultimate goal. We just may, we may be towards that goal. We may not, we may not be able to get to it in this strategic plan. We should have at least an idea.
And we may do it a little bit um, different. We may really, fundamentals in the elementary schools. That is really what you need to build on. And so really paying attention to the growth and the proficiencies in elementary school. But as you go up through, I mean, you watch the robotics team uh, increasing in size. Um, and doing quite well. You look at all the variety of the advanced placement courses. And you see the kids taking more than one, which means they're looking for challenges outside of what we can provide. Uh, in variety within the schools. So I think we need to maybe look a little bit further too. And see if they're taking broader um, classes in advanced placement. And how many kids are actually looking at career tech? And are we encouraging kids? What is it? Thirty percent of our kids are college ready or something like that? I think I saw um, oriented towards college. And I think we need to actually say, well, it's not just college we're preparing you for.
Career.
Exactly.
Career and college.
So skills are something we need to also encourage kids and commend them for. Even though the skills won't necessarily show up in a proficiency testing.
Well, I'm excited to, to take a stand on, on lots of, and of variable things, you know, including rigorous things like A P courses. And early middle college, but just to have a lens through equity and make sure that while some students might be taking a lot of A P courses. You know, I can see like central high school right now has economic, thirty seven percent of those economically disadvantaged kids take it compared to fifty percent of all students. So, and that's all I'm asking is like, uh, are we seeing it through a lens of, of, and, and all the support that's going on? Like what does success look like, right? That's always been the question. And it can be, look like lots of things and that will, that will be up to us. Um, and, and to also hold ourselves accountable. So um, you, you know, and, and I love graduation rate. The graduation rate last year for economically disadvantaged students was seventy-four percent.
Well, one thing that they looked at, at the um, alternate high school is how many years it takes to, to get you graduated. Right? So you have the four year, five year and the six year. So you know, it probably.
Which I would encourage the board, if you're going to look at that to, you know, yeah, we want four years. But I, I personally believe there are kids that have things happen. If we can get them with a diploma after five or six, I'm excited about that.
And if the kid is pulling out of school in part to help support his family.
There's lots of circumstances that some kids have.
Congratulations, you've, you've grown up.
Right.
Right. So then that, that makes sense to stagger it like ninety-five percent for four years, ninety-eight percent for five years. And one hundred percent for six years.
Good.
That would be realistic, I think. Close to it. How do y'all feel about E L A versus and or math achievement?
I think you need both.
I agree. Uh, if we saw a big difference between one or the other in proficiency, then we would work, focus on bringing up, you know, the lagging indicator. But they're both around sixtieth percentile for proficiency. So I feel like they both deserve our attention.
You know, don't know if it matters, but one thing I will mention is the state is putting a ton of resources into E L A and not as much into math.
Right. And some of the grants are going to go there, like the new curriculum that we just bought.
Probably because as a state, we're lagging more in E L A than math. Probably because as the state, we're lagging more in E L A than math, right, that's what's going on. Is that just going on the state of Michigan, like, kind of opposite of the national trend?
No, I don't think so, I think reading is still the lagging indicator nationally. I mean, e- even as a, the North Ed is a, as the I S D goes, with their support, they have. Six to seven E L A support people that help that are part of our regular meetings, and math they have one for five counties.
It just blows my mind.
I agree.
It blows my mind.
There's this really great new documentary about math education, how important it is in every career, I saw the trailer, it's amazing. I, I know, I know.
What's it called?
Uh, Count, Count On or something. I'll put it for a screening.
If it's on Netflix, I'll get a subscription for that.
Board study session watching it, just kidding, okay.
I, I asked John, I said, can't we deliberately go out and say. You know, we can give you a scholarship if you will do math and be good, you know, and, and come work for us. Sort of like a, a Pell Grant sort of thing, and his comment was he didn't see as many go into math. As teachers, and I don't know if that's part of the problem.
That, that is true, I just, we have less of our elementary teachers who are math majors in college. It's not typically where you go as an elementary teacher.
So your second to last bullet, will there, will there be goals surrounding spending of additional funds, I will just. I'm happy to speak on this, I personally would feel comfortable with. Administration figuring out how to allocate the dollars to meet the goals, I, I feel like that's. That's where, I mean, you know, if you have to come to us down the road, like. You know, do we wanna reduce classroom splits or something like that and we have to make a more decision, you know, that might emerge, but. To just start out with a strategic plan and say, we want you to spend the dollars X way, like, it's a very complex. Process, you've got all these different funding sources and, and it's like three-dimensional chess, as I said at curriculum committee last month. So, I mean, I personally just would not wanna direct the, the administration to spend the money a certain way, cause I trust you to figure out. How to allocate to meet the goals that we're setting.
Well, there's, you know, there's a checks and balance for that, obviously, that the board approves the budget. So at any point, if the board feels that there's a messed up there, point it out. And we'll have a conversation.
I'm not shy.
And I agree, you, you had the chance to see a lot of that tonight, I think, of what we've dedicated and the way that that's done. You know, so when we like, we get into mission-based budgeting, it's based off of that. I mean, the general fund's pretty easy, it's based on the formula, amount of kid we have, we put a teacher in front of them. Beyond that, it's everything you saw here is what's differentiated in funding based upon the federal state regs. We, we have a little bit and you saw a little bit of maybe the variance that we choose, it's not much.
And every time again, I forget how many buckets there are, like, not that one, not that one.
One thing Jesse will tell you, you know, in her first year of education of, of that, it's, she, I think even from. You know, a veteran administrator in the building coming to central office and seeing that, I think Jesse would tell you, it was eye-opening. You know, to sit and look at all the different pots. And she's done a great job of learning those and being able to articulate that today, but that's a lot.
And I just wanna, just, I mean, Josie, I mean, it's spot on, and I think it hinges on the goal, right, so right now, there currently is not a metric. That we've identified to know that we are successful, so if we establish this district-wide goal. Then yes, the superintendent can figure out the how, we, we set the what.
Within reason. And at this point, we're still figuring out what the reason is.
Right, yep.
And lastly, state or and or national assessments, I think we've already talked about the limitations of the M step. And the benefits of the N W E A, so I would lean towards the N W E A. Given that it does give us a national benchmark, cause every time I look at a graphic without the national and just the state and I think, well, Michigan's, you know, bottom ten in the country. Let's compare ourselves to, you know, all fifty states, including states like Virginia and Massachusetts, so that'd be my personal preference.
I think it's important still though that we show the board, you know, periodically as we do data, you know, updates is required that. Obviously, the M step, I think, you know, Ty, we've had great conversations on. Unfortunately, that, that's the front and center thing that's put in the paper and in front of that metric, so I think it's a printed talk, but. I, I would agree that's something that is, you know, that measurable, and then I do think there's a little conversation, you know, I would like board input. As we get to that transition between N W A and somewhere we start taking M step. Of maybe, you know, one of the limitations, you might remember, is we're taking this three times. And then we're taking the third one just about the same time we're taking the state assessment. So I, I wouldn't mind a little bit of conversation when we get into this. Of where you guys feel of three versus two and that M step. Of where we kinda cut that, you know, that, that's third one to maybe concentrate a little bit more on that, on the M step and then the transition. Into S A T, just, we've talked about it a ton, and like, you know, I think that there's, again, there's great things of measuring the three that we love. But I think we'll also know our teachers and when we get feedback, they just say, kids are fried by the time they take the fourth assessment.
That's why, it's like, they don't even, like, it's just like, I'm just done one, whereas then they come up like, we're doing another one.
So, I would like in the process, just a little bit of feedback when we get into it of, you know, team. It's okay if you do X to be able to try and read that.
So in that case, we'd probably look at winter N W E A or, or fall instead of, if we would no longer have the spring N W E A.
I think that's a conversation, I'd want the team to kinda think about that a little bit, but if you're open to that conversation, we'd like to get that kinda, you know, nailed down before, you know. We go into this next school year.
We, we've been having, we were thinking of doing something with our board curriculum learning series in May to kinda. Look at an assessment plan, just because it's even not only with subject area, but with also with grade level, so for instance. M step, third and fourth grade take two assessments, fifth grade takes four, and then they got on top of that in the spring, take. Um, two N W E A, so maybe as far as even grade levels moving assessments around, we were in front of our math and our E L A. District teams over the past couple of weeks got their input, asked them to go back to get some teacher input, and what would it look like? To move some of these or take some of these assessments away, cause we don't wanna take an assessment away that they use on a regular basis to help make decisions about instruction. But at the same time, as a district, wanna talk about the assessment plan we currently have in place, you know, we've implemented. Another assessment called Ames Web this year for reading, used to be for a select group of kids, now every kid in our district is doing Ames Web as far as reading goes. So we can pinpoint where, where they need support, so we don't wanna keep adding and adding and adding, we at some point need to bring something away.
So I think we'll have the team think about this a little bit over the next two weeks here as we get into that, and, and, you know, because that could change. You know, a grade level maybe of, you know, not having that as a metric, maybe we say, for instance, we're okay not using. Picking a grade, fifth grade as a metric because of that, you know, element, but, cause we won't have equal growth measures, but again. We're happy to have that conversation.
And Ames Web, you say K through eight or K through five?
Ames Web currently is K five.
Um, yeah, so we've had many conversations about, um, you know, and, and I, you know, N W A, you know, sounds great and I love the growth aspect of it. It, it is not listed, like, so I'm looking at the front page of our website and then there's a, a, a link here for, for families to look at transparency and. Outcomes for their school and, and N W A is not mentioned, so, and maybe if we do decide that we are gonna pursue. N W A, maybe we can put.
And have a dashboard.
That, a dashboard on the website. You know, for community members who do care about, you know, how we're doing and that wanna help. So, you know, and, and again, like, we, it's in, in the newspaper a lot, proficiency, M step for better or worse, but I'd like to be able to just turn to my neighbor and explain, yes. You know, we're doing all these wonderful things and here's where we're working towards and here's how you can help. And again, I just, I look forward to, to, to making, establishing a goal.
So, let's talk just for a moment about strategic plan then, so we have two data set up. You know, one, I think, in my mind, we'll have time, take it like we have a lot of data coming, surveys. We're pushing somewhere right now about, I think, two thousand responses to surveys.
Oh, good, between students and.
Yeah, students has been a little weird, she said that we had about, as of the other day, about four hundred full responses. But about nine hundred partial responses, so I don't know if kids maybe missed the last page or something, you know, with that. But, um, you know, the one that was kinda low was community members, we put another push out with some with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, a couple other partner organizations as well. It was lower last time, cause it's mostly people that don't have kids in school anymore, or don't have, never had T Cabs kids at all. Um, but overall, we're getting a decent response, we put another push out yesterday, it closes, closed today at, at five o'clock. So at this point, the surveys, um, Northwest Ed is working on focus groups right now. Um, that are, you might remember, they kinda do a random sample and try and invite people the, the first week of April. Um, so we'll have a lot of data and things to kinda look at, the first one, and then maybe, you know, for that second one. You know, that Dan and Jesse are able to bring maybe some assessment plan thoughts with that, that gives you kinda that guide for. Coming up maybe that second one with where you're, you're going with this, does that sound okay, does that sound in the realm? We may need a third, we, we kinda have a June date right now, set for a third, if we needed it, we'll see where it goes, but. Is everybody okay with that kinda thought right now?
I think it sounds great.
And I think, I mean, my kind of gut is that we use those two that are closer together, that we come up with some pretty good ideas of where we're gonna go, but then.
And we may have a finalization of the document.
Finalization. And I know, I know that you're going for one, I mean, I'm going for one, I'm going for the last one.
Well, current, I'm going for number one, you're going for number two.
Number two.
And then we may have a number three.
Yeah. Yeah, so we got a few, I know that there's conflicts that people are trying to resolve and, uh, so it is, but yeah, I think there will be probably a final one. Cause it's a lot to do, I mean, there's, there's a lot to do.
It's, you know, we've got spring break next week and then bad week, we're in it, so like, for the team to kinda come up like, you know. It may take us about even a third one for us to get this conversation in the end, we may get through some of the others and this one may be. For you to be fully involved, for them to have time for that full plan, it could be the June one that that final kinda this metric is decided, but, you know, just kinda. Trying to lay the timeline out for you guys a little bit.
I just had a quick question, a couple of questions about the responses so far, for students that only go to high school or also.
I believe middle school and high school.
Middle school and high school, yep.
So is that, I mean, and North Ed is, like, they'll just crunch the data with the.
They will not, it's actually a separate, North Ed would not do it this time, so Glauco is the company we did, they will, they're gonna do a full analysis of it. Create a report of all of it, and that'll be provided to the board for the study session.
So just the denominator will vary from question to question based on whether it's full or partial. It's not like a percentage-based thing for us.
Yeah, we had one little thing, we, um, Kendra had a conversation, there was a little worry about some of the data points being so fine that it could maybe. Identify individual people, so, and, and what it had is it did ask the question of what building you're in, are you tenured? We changed a little bit to went, what grade span building are you in, so they're gonna work to merge, there, there weren't a lot of surveys done before that point. But after she did that, we sat with Glauco, got it all straight where we were all in agreement, and so, uh, a lot's been done since then, but. They, they think they can work to merge that data together.
And do we know approximately how many parents filled it out? Students were thirteen hundred, there were about two thousand.
And this is gonna be a little bit lagging, so this was over the weekend. Um, we had about nine hundred and seventy parents.
Nice, okay, that's good.
Yep, as of, as of this, as of Saturday. Uh, it was nine hundred and seventy parents, seven hundred and twenty-two students, but three sixty-five completed all the way through. Staff about three hundred and eighty and community was thirty at that point, but we did make a big push. Um, yesterday to try and hit more and we sent it to students, even tried to get some very student group student sentence involved, some of that. Um, you know, as well to try and bolster some of those.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on? Anything? Any of the last slide, alright, I know we're actually past on time, so we can, uh. With that, we will come back out, uh, here and is there any additional public comment?
There is.
So, I just read my thing again, the board has set aside this time for public comment. Individuals addressing the board, the board should have one opportunity to speak, limited to three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system, we strongly encourage comments courtesy. Sorry, constructive feedback, detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint process outlined in Board Policy two five zero four.
Thank you very much, my, my gratitude. Really, first wanting to say how much I appreciate this board meeting. Uh, it's quite obvious that the board is doing a really strong job. I know that because I was board member for twelve years. I'd also like to compliment the administration, everyone I've heard. Knows what they're talking about, and I know that because I ran the state, the programs for the state of Michigan for ten years. Title one, title two, title three, homes, migrant, immigrant, thirty-one A, all of those programs were in my direction. So I worked with the lower district and six hundred and forty other districts and about, uh, two hundred, two, two to four hundred charter schools. I saw a lot of plans, I saw good plans, I saw bad plans, I saw an awful lot of mediocre plans. You've got hard work to do, board certainly, um, your job is to allocate limited resources to unlimited needs. Top job. The teachers have a tough job. It's a, it's a demanding profession when you don't have resources. And you don't, okay? So now, uh, you're facing another strategic plan, the strategic plan, in, in every case that I've seen. Drives what happens in the future, okay? Cause you do it, if you set mediocre goals, which you, you set low goals, which you, you set high goals, which you. Does people start pulling together, make something happen, something good happen. I'm a strong advocate for an equity measure in your, in your goals. And it's, it's the only way the kids who are, uh, at risk. Really can be brought up if you pay attention to them. And, uh, it's a, it's a, it's the toughest part of the job, it's helping them achieve. So I would strongly recommend that you, uh, include that equity measure in your, in your goals. And you can't have too many, because people cannot attend to many goals. And they just give up. Few, smart, aggressive goals. Thank you very much for your attention, congratulations, good luck, good luck.
Thank you, any other? Um, so, thank you everyone for attending, I know we've had a lot of board meetings, uh. Yeah, still, yeah, much, uh, um, and, uh, a lot more coming up in April as well, so. With that, the next Board of Education meeting is Monday, April seventh, um, at the Northwest. Um, Education Conference Center, um, which is, uh, at one one zero one Red Drive in Traverse City. Uh, that is, is the study session based off of the strategic planning, so. Again, that's it, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn the meeting, second.
Same, all those in favor say aye. All the pros say nay, meeting adjourned.